Good evening and welcome to the April 10 Palmer Town Council meeting if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is visitors comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone? Donald?
Apologies, my throat's a little scratchy with allergies. So Donald Blaze, Chairman of the Palmer Conservation Commission. I just wanted to come by real quick just to give another reminder to you and to the public that next Saturday, the 22nd, which is actually Earth Day, we are doing our Earth Day cleanup at townwide cleanup at Love Left Field. So we've had great turnout in the past few years. I think Senator Olivera was there last year. I think you and your mom were there and we had a big turnout and it was a great time. So I hope people will come out again. So when you get there, you just sign up. You can either stay at Love Left Field or if you want to go to different parts of the town and clean up, you know, whatever area that you think needs a little cleanup, you can do that. So just want to come by and mention it and hope to see everybody there. It should be a good time.
Good, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, I'm going to skip the minutes right now. We'll do those at the end of the meeting. Okay. All business, we have none. Does any counselor have any old business? Seeing none, new business. So we have State Senator Jacob Olivera as well as State Rep Todd Smola. Here is our guest this evening. And we'll start with you, Senator. Whatever you want to let us know about would be appreciated.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to all the council for inviting me to actually be part of your meeting tonight. Jake Olivera, I'm your new state senator and through the redistricting process that occurred every, occurs every 10 years, your former state senator Ann Goby's district shifted eastward and most of the districts in the western part of the state to accommodate for a population shifts in our Commonwealth moved a little bit to the east. And so when Senator Lesser, who occupied the majority of the district beforehand, decided to run for Lieutenant Governor, I decided to jump in for the race and have now, fortunate enough to be elected and representing 12 communities now in Hampton, Hampshire and one community in Worcester County, the metropolis of Warren, where Representative Smola is very familiar with. But I'm just here today to basically introduce myself, describe a little bit about me, but also to talk about the partnership that I have with each one of the reps in my district, but particularly with Representative Smola, someone who understands the town of Palmer, someone who served in the previous body in the Board of Selectmen before it was dissolved for the town council. I myself spent 16 years in local government in Ludlow. I did 12 years as a member of our Ludlow School Committee and then four as a member of the rep town meeting form of government that we had and then two years before that as a student rep. So I spent a lot of time in municipal government, learning about it and trying to understand and certainly having 12 communities in my district right now that have varying different forms of government to strong mayor systems like Springfield and Chicopee to town council forums like Palmer and East Long Meadow that's also in my district, to select boards that are, you know, three in size and five in size, to rep town meetings, to open town meetings. It's very interesting kind of learning and understanding the needs. Ryan, as we kind of go into the budget process, understanding the needs of Palmer is something that I am keenly interested in learning more from you. My family has deep roots in this community. My grandfather was actually born here on Green Street in Palmer, which is just at the intersection of 181 and Route 20 and lived here most of his life before he moved to Ludlow. Their family came here to Palmer in the late 1800s with a round of Polish immigrants that made their way here. And so my family goes back several generations here, but he also helped to build the Quabon Reservoir in the 1930s. He was an earth mover. So the connection to Palmer for me is very personal because of my family's history, but also because I get a lot of my services here. We were just at Quabon Valley Ice Center's new opening. I had Dr. Wolf as my optometrist and I'll be moving now to that, to that new practice. But also thank you for inviting me to so many community events that you had. We had a great ceremony just a couple of weeks ago for the police department and the awards. And Ryan did a wonderful job hosting along with the chief, making sure we recognize our law enforcement officers. But I want to be here today just to be an open door to all of you. My district director Jennifer Pickering, who's sitting in the green jacket, we do office hours here once a month in Palmer at the library. We'll make sure to get that on your, on your calendar and get the word out there to the community. Anybody can stop in. But also Jennifer is such a great resource because she was Senator Lesser's district director beforehand. And the three communities that were added into this new state senate district, Palmer, Warren and South Hadley, just to the north, are all part of this new fabric of this new Hampton, Hampshire and Worcester district. In the legislature, you know, I have the privilege of chairing now the Municipalities and Regional Government Committee, which we have our first hearing tomorrow that I know Rep Smola is going to be at as well. It's the committee that deals with any type of home rule petition or any type of special legislation that comes from our cities and towns and needs legislative approval. Its first stop is my committee that I chair along with Carol Fiola on the House side from Fall River. And together we want to make sure that we get, you know, those pieces of legislation that require legislative approval over the finish line as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to offer up, you know, to you as the council and to the town manager that if you do have a special legislation, I will try to move it as quickly as possible out of my committee. But I'm also privileged enough to sit on six other committees that deal with a lot of things that municipalities deal with. I'm on consumer protection, professional licensure, which deals with liquor licenses in the Commonwealth, including if a community wants to expand the number of liquor license they have, but also other committees that have to deal with a lot of the services that we're looking at. I'm vice chair of the Committee on Tourism, Arts and Culture. I've had the opportunity to visit the steampunk gentleman, Mr. Rosenbloom, that has the old, one of the old Irish Catholic churches here in the community. Palmer is actually emerging as a community that is part of the creative economy. One out of six jobs in western Massachusetts is tied directly back to it and we want to make sure that we promote that as much as we can. Also I'm vice chairing this session, the Public Health Committee, which, you know, we really didn't have much public health issues over the last few years, so should be relatively boring. But aside from that, financial services, which does with, deals with kind of the insurance and banking industry here in Massachusetts. But I'm just here tonight to say that, you know, I'm someone that's very keenly focused in on making your jobs easier as local elected officials, looking at the major funding sources that municipalities rely upon, whether it's Chapter 78, Chapter 98, making sure that unrestricted local aid is invested in as well as the Commonwealth, but also looking at those other pockets of funds. If you're applying for grants, if you're applying for other resources that require state approval or need somebody, my office is always open to help with that. We're very privileged and fortunate to see that the governor's budget that came out on March 1st included about $4 million for the rail stop for West East Rail. Want to make sure that as the House and Senate build their budget out, that Palmer is prioritized as we're in the development of that major project. I know that the House is coming out with their budget this Wednesday. The Senate will play cleanup later on in, in May and we want to make sure that we get your budget priorities and your needs before both our chambers as we build out the FY24 budget. With that, I just wanted to, you know, thank you for being so welcoming. Thank you to Ryan for always having the best interests of the community when he's been approaching us and being so present. With that, I also want to offer that, you know, Representative Smola and I are going to be partnering for this community as strongly as we can. We share two communities together. I've enjoyed working with Rep Smola first as a colleague in the House, now working with him representing two communities. It really is a privilege and honor to work with him because he has so much institutional knowledge. He is a ranking member of Ways and Means on the House side, which means he has a direct conduit when we're talking about budget priorities as we begin to negotiate the FY24 budget. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Madam President, if you want to turn it over to Rep Smola. If you want to give him the floor.
Well, do you have anything you wanted to talk about?
No, just thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's, I'm honored to be here with Senator Olivera. We had such a strong working relationship in the House and I'm glad that we can continue it as Senate and House colleagues. You've seen his visibility in such a short period of time here in Palmer and we really do work in a very close partnership. Even during his days in the House, we did some great things for western Massachusetts, worked on some good projects, including in the Quabon Reservoir, which we're continuing to do and we're going to do that for Palmer as well. So I'm very excited to be here. I'll give you the quick 30,000 foot view about what's going on now with the budget. So the Ways and Means Committee wrapped up its hearing schedule, which was actually today in Boston. It was kind of the final wrap-up hearing that we have where anybody from the public can come and participate, share what their concerns are on the budget. What we did over the course of the pandemic is we shut down our public hearing process by making it a virtual process. This year we picked that back up again. We do a traveling road show across the Commonwealth where we take different components of the budget and we invite in our secretaries, our commissioners, people from different agencies of the Commonwealth, and they come before us to testify. So we've been up in Gloucester, we've been at UMass, we've been at Arlington, Stick, Fitchburg. We've virtually been all over the state conducting these hearings. So now that's done. You will see the House version of the budget in two days, so it will be going public. I am sworn to secrecy, so I can't share too much about what that document, you'll see it soon enough. But let's just say that we've been actively working on that for a period of a few months now. You've seen the governor's numbers and the governor's numbers are actually pretty solid in terms of different components that we would all be looking at from the local municipal perspective, the Chapter 70 and Chapter 90, as Senator Olivera had mentioned, and a number of other pockets of money that are going to be coming in. So we really do have a big picture vision here. I think it's important to note that because we have a new administration, we need some time for that new administration to get their legs underneath them. They've just kind of rounded out all the appointments on the upper tier of the executive, so all our secretary's positions are filled. We're now going along with the appointments to different commissioner slots across various agencies. So it will take some time to get all of that organized. But I would say that Governor Healy, because of her experience as the former Attorney General, she knows how government works and we've worked well with her in that capacity during her years in service to the Commonwealth. So we're excited about the new opportunity and new vision for the Commonwealth. So what you'll see now is once that House budget is released, the House will debate it at the end of April. The Senate will then take it up in May and then that budget will go into a conference committee where six members will try and figure out what that final document's going to look like. I've been privileged to serve on the conference committee for six years now. I'll be on that conference committee again this year. We'll negotiate the final document. It'll go to the governor. Then hopefully we get it done by the end of the fiscal year. That's, that's the mission. That doesn't, that doesn't always work. But in a couple of years past, actually, we've done 1/12 budgets because we didn't complete the negotiations by the start of the fiscal year. Don't be too concerned about that. Our philosophy on the conference committee is our preference is to get it right as opposed to getting it done quickly. So we never leave municipalities out hanging. We always keep the financial wheel turning for Massachusetts. But we really do our best to try and get it done before the fiscal year is concluded. But again, it doesn't always work out that way. So that's kind of the, the big view. I would also caution, what we've been sharing with local municipalities is over the course of the pandemic, there's been a lot of resources that have come into local municipalities and to school systems, CARES Act 1, CARES Act 2, ARPA, ESSER money. Expect absolutely nothing in addition from the federal government is going to be coming in the direction of local municipalities. And by some miracle, if it does, hooray. Plan today, though, that additional pools of money are not going to be coming back to cities and towns. We want to prepare everybody for that from the financial aspect because there sometimes is an expectation that it just keeps cranking. And remember the motive and the mission for that from the federal government was that we wanted to help municipalities because we were all kind of stuck in the same boat financially. Now we have got to get kind of back on track with how things used to be. We've got a $55 billion budget proposal this year. Massachusetts is positioned far better than many other states because we have managed our money extremely, extremely well. We have been pragmatic. We've been cautious. We've made aggressive investments in a lot of different arenas, which are really important. But at the same time, we also recognize the value of keeping our bond rating high, so that gives us capacity to go out there and borrow and do things that we need to across the state. And it also helps set local municipalities up as well, kind of in a better financial position to be able to plan what you're going to do for the future. So I would say Massachusetts has done extremely well in recent years and we were better prepared during the pandemic as a result of it too, where a lot of other states decided that they were going to move forward and blow resources much more quicker than Massachusetts did. We were very, very cautious. We did one round of ARPA, which is that big chunk of money that came into Massachusetts just over a year ago. We took that with excess revenue from the Commonwealth. We pooled it together and we sent those resources out to do various projects across the Commonwealth, capital projects and earmark a number of different projects that would be helpful to cities and towns. There is another chunk of, of funding that's out there in the state government. We're not quite sure how we're going to spend that money at this point. So we're working on that right now. But we do know we have a couple of crises going on in Massachusetts. We have a big housing crisis, which is a super problem everywhere, but it's a bigger problem here in western Massachusetts. So we got to figure out the balance of trying to work on all of these things and making sure that we are moving in a positive direction. So I think as the new administration moves forward, you're going to see some visionary stuff. You're going to see some new ideas and that's stuff that we will work in the legislature in tandem with the executive to try and figure out how it's going to best serve the people in Massachusetts. So that's where we are and I thank you for the opportunity tonight and it's been great to partner with Ryan. Ryan's been a great resource to us and keeps us in close contact with the things that are going on on the ground level. And of course, our job is to partner with you as a municipality because we're all in this together. So we thank you for that.
So while we have you here, I do have, I have four different things I want to talk about.
Sure.
Some of them, yeah. Well, I think they're all important. The first one is the supplemental budget that the governor filed a few, maybe two weeks ago or so. There's, Todd and I have spoken about this several times, but there's a component in it that's really important to communities regarding the changes to the finance laws for, to allow us to be able to spend opioid money that we're getting in communities as opposed to having, putting them in a stabilization fund. I'm just wondering where that supplemental budget stands and if anything you could tell us on that would be helpful.
So I'll just start out when we were before the Ludlow Select Board just a couple of weeks ago, that was mentioned as well. All of our communities are going to benefit from some of the money that we're recouping, recouping out there. I know Mass Municipal Association, which we've partnered with in my office quite a bit over the last few years, a few months, is offering some guidance on it. We want to make sure that we give flexibility to the communities in order to spend those dollars. We heard from Ludlow on, you know, their needs on allowing them to actually put that towards something that can make an impact within their community. So as we begin to look at the governor's supplemental budget and our timeline for that, as, you know, both the House and the Senate look, budget bills like that will originate in the House and they'll do their due diligence on it first and it'll come on over to the Senate. We want to make sure we give the tools and municipalities that they need. So please, as that supplemental budget bill moves its way through the legislature, don't hesitate to call our office and count on us to advocate for any type of flexibility that you want to see as a community.
Any idea when you guys will be taking that supplemental budget up? Will it be before June 30th?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the expectation. I can't give you the exact date right now because what's happening on the agenda this week is we released the budget in two days. That's a big thing for the House. On Thursday, we're actually going in to debate a tax package, tax relief package in the House, which we're still waiting for the details on. I expect that I will see them first thing tomorrow morning. That, so that's up. There's a bunch of different things that are in there that are important to local municipalities, the opioid settlement, money in the date being one of them. I anticipate that we will get that done timely. Because we're debating the budget at the end of April and that's kind of the big thing that sucks the life out of the room, if we can reach reasonable compromise on the components of that supplemental budget, we can do it in the middle of doing the actual budget debate itself, which we've done in the past. So that could very well happen during that same time. I don't know if it's going to happen at the same time, but we're going to work towards that because we, the subs come, the subs are basically mini budgets that happen along the way. They help to fill in holes of things that aren't part of the general appropriation budget. So all of the things that the governor has filed in there, and remember, the governor's only been there for three months. So all the things that have been filed in that sub-budget are things that are of critical importance to get funded or language changes to get done so that can help local municipalities. So it is on our radar screen. We are going to get it done sooner than later.
Okay. And then special ed costs are a concern, not only in Palmer, but probably all over the state and beyond probably. But what, what are you doing, if anything, to address, is there anything in the budget to address that? And I also want to say, I think that, you know, you spoke about the ARPA and ESSER and every CARES and all that. But I think unfortunately, in the schools especially, it's set up, it's a fiscal cliff and we're all going to fall off all at the same time. That's very concerning. And so, you know, it's one thing that all that money flowed into communities, but now, as you said, it's done. And, you know, budgets were built about adding staff and, you know, those, a lot of those things after COVID needed to be done. But now the staffing is still needed and now communities are left to absorb those costs in budgets that are, you know, already strained because of two and a half, but also strained because of the economy that we're in now, you know, escalating prices for gasoline and oil and everything else, you know, construction costs and maintenance on vehicles and everything that we have to do. So what's happening with that, if anything?
So typically what you, we are used to in the Commonwealth, and I want to go to the employment thing because it kind of roots back to what you're just commenting about. So typically we are accustomed, and we talked about this at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, we are accustomed to peaks and valleys. Peaks and valleys means that one year we are having a shortage in police officers. So the Commonwealth has to be creative and come together with local municipalities, figure out how we're going to fix that. And then we come up with a solution for it. And perhaps the next year we have a shortage of teachers and we got to figure out how we're going to deal with that question. And then the following year, we have trouble in manufacturing and we got to figure out how to move people into the manufacturing sector. And as I think everybody in this council knows, in the employment arena, everybody has a problem right now. Everybody is looking for workers. It's tough to incentivize them to come through the door, even when you offer signing bonuses, you offer better benefit packages, you offer higher pay. Everybody is still struggling. So intertwined with all of these other budget challenges that we have, we are trying to figure out this massive problem and that is the employment issue. The reason that I focus on that in relation to the comments that you just made about the federal resources that are coming through is that we can't just throw money at something and expect that it's going to get fixed. And this cliff effect that's coming, I think one of the things we found interesting in the legislature is all of these big pots of money came back for a lot of reasons, for schools, for municipalities. And it's funny, when you give these big pots of money, all of a sudden people don't know what to do with it. So, and of course, how often do you see a pandemic like the one we saw? You don't that often. So when you see this big infusion of resources that come, come in, everybody's looking around saying, well, what do we do with it? How are we going to spend that money? And I think what we are finding is that as that expenditure, those expenditures have been made over the course of the last couple of years, the idea for some of those expenditures was never, what do I do once this money goes away? And how do I keep this continually? Local municipalities will come to us and say, let's, give us more money for roads and bridges. So, you know, we, we do a Chapter 90 bill every, every year in order to send money back to cities and towns and we'd love to give more. But the legislature's priority is to make sure that we can sustain it, right? So even if this year looks great and we could afford 300 million or 400 million in that category, the question is, what will we do next year when we have to figure it out? So you compound these things as time goes on and that, that cliff effect that you're referring to is a problem that a lot of our school systems and municipalities are running into because it's how those federal dollars were spent in these different categories. So we caution everybody to be extremely mindful of when a dollar is spent today. It's one thing if you do it on capital, you know, something that is going to stick around for a lot of years. It's quite another thing if you do it as something that's part of your general operating budget that you have to fund from year to year because when that cliff effect comes around, that money isn't going to be replenished from a resource that only comes around during a pandemic every 80 years. So it's a big issue. It's an issue we've tried to warn local municipalities about. We've talked about it from the Ways and Means Committee perspective. We have explained to people that when you're coming to us and you're requesting resources, make darn sure that when you're asking for that resource, you have it in your mind of how you're going to figure it out from a municipal level, but for continuity sake. And, and that's a discussion that we've engaged in actually, in a number of different fronts to try and determine what is going to be the best bang for the buck for, for a local municipality. So it's an issue. It's a big issue. And I would say that this, one thing the state is not, while we, this is a good budget, I think it's going to be at the end of the day, a generous budget in a lot of categories. It's not going to be a knight riding on a shining silver horse that is going to solve all, all the problems.
Yeah, special ed.
If I could speak real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Devil's advocate with, with the ARPA and the ESSER on it. I know as you're speaking, you know, dropping off the cliff as a devil's advocate here. This money was never intended to just keep coming in and coming in. And after being at the Pathfinder's budget the other night and listening to how they didn't fund extra jobs and this and that with that money, knowing that it wasn't going to dry up. So I'm not trying to say shame on you or whatever, but they use it for whatever, but knowing that this was going to dry up. So you kind of jumped off the cliff with that bag of money in their hand and now they're expecting a safety net. Figure it out.
So I'm talking to, for the special ed, I'm talking about the increase in private tuition.
So it wasn't created from like any decisions that were made in Palmer.
You know, if you funded all extra jobs with this money, expecting that you were going to keep being able to fund these jobs with this money that you know wasn't going to last forever.
Yeah.
Quite blankly, shame on you.
I don't think that, that, I, that may have happened elsewhere in the state. I don't think it happened in Palmer, but Barbara is.
Systems, whatever, have done this and I know it.
Barbara is talking about is a decision that was made at the state.
Yes. And that's actually, so I, having spent 12 years as a school committee, there wasn't a meeting that I had, more than three meetings consecutively in a row, where we didn't have to add in another paraprofessional onto our budget to accommodate for special ed costs within our school district. Special ed costs in the Commonwealth are outpacing inflation. Taking out the private out-of-district placements, special ed costs in Massachusetts have been rising far higher than the regular rate of inflationary costs for education. It is outpacing the inflationary costs on a whole host of levels. That 14 and a half percent increase that the state negotiated for the private pay independent special education schools, they are important. They've been, that rate hasn't been raised in quite a while and they provide a needed resource for school districts for children that require those services. And you can't say no in the Commonwealth. A school district can't say no if an IEP is calling for a student to attend one of these out-of-district placements. Problem is that I have on our end right now, and this is what we're working through, is we have the special education circuit breaker, which reimburses school districts for extraordinary costs that go exceed well above the average school spending per pupil in a school district, particularly for those out-of-district placements. We now have that at 75% reimbursement rate if it's fully funded in the line item of the Commonwealth's budget, which it has been over the last previous fiscal years. I have actually filed legislation to raise that to 90% in order to accommodate for that increase that we have right now. We're actually working and in our meetings with the chairs of Ways and Means, I have brought up this issue multiple times and I've been assured, speaking with the Senate President, that whether it's a supplemental budget or whether it's, you know, the operating FY24 budget, that school districts need relief from these increased costs. I also have a bill that I filed this legislative session that actually takes a whole-scale look of how we finance special education in the Commonwealth. Similar to what we did with the Foundation Budget Review Commission that took a look at our appropriations towards Chapter 70 and how we divide up Chapter 70 to our school districts, we took an approach where a commission met for nearly a year and a half and then made recommendations back to the legislature. And we're now, I think, in year three or year four of fully implementing the Student Opportunity Act, which is helping out school districts that were chronically underfunded, but took a look at those major cost drivers for school districts. I filed legislation this session, working with the School Committee Association, the Superintendents Association, Mass Municipal Association, to actually do the same thing for special education costs because it's not sustainable for school districts right now. My hope is that we can pass this legislation to create a commission that can report back to the legislature on ways in which we can contain costs for school districts for special education while still providing a quality education in the services that our children need, but also making recommendations on how the state, the Commonwealth can support school districts that are facing these cost cliffs that are well beyond the rate of inflation that we're facing right now. We've heard, I've heard this at every single municipal board that I've been to, at every school committee that I've gone to. And we're trying to work on areas in the legislature in order to put more dollars towards that circuit breaker, but also taking a whole-scale look at how we fund special education in the Commonwealth because it's not sustainable.
You'll see our recommendation in two days.
I, I, yeah. I understand that, but I would be, it would not be wise of me to sit here and just not
Absolutely, of course.
Raise all the issues that.
I got one thing. Is there going to be anything in the budget to enhance mental illness and all that in the school system? As you can see, 15 years ago, whenever they started defunding, shutting down state schools and all this, look what's going on in the communities with the shootings and all this and discipline isn't being correct, I think. But there's something in there for that also.
We passed last year a comprehensive mental health bill that put Yeah, we passed last year a comprehensive mental health bill that put in a lot of funding for, uh, colleges. It's not just at the K through 12 side, it's also colleges and universities. WPI, which didn't have a suicide for, um, a couple of decades or had one suicide, last academic year, I think had seven. That rate of mental health illness that's impacting so many of our communities, especially post pandemic right now. As people, the isolation that they felt, my dad's a high school teacher over in Ludlow. He sees it, the impact that it's had on students right now. And so, you know, the, on the Senate side and on the House side, we're committed to passing more legislation in order to address this mental health crisis that's grabbing, uh, grabbing not just, you know, you know, school districts, but also everybody in society. You know, you look at our employment challenges that we're facing, the amount of people that are going out on medical, paid family medical leave because they have a spouse or a child or a loved one that they're needing to care for, that's really facing some intense mental health issues. It's having an impact on our employment challenges. It's having an impact on our employers. It's having an impact on our children. And ultimately, we all have an impact on our future. I know on the Senate side, we've been, uh, we've had many conversations with the Senate leadership about this very issue. And we'll likely see another comprehensive mental health bill pass our chamber that will give more supports to school districts, colleges and universities, but also help to employers as well that are really dealing with this. When I went to a business group just a couple of weeks ago, I was expecting to hear tax changes. I was expecting to hear, you know, employment, uh, challenges that they're having. All they could talk about was mental health because their employees are being impacted, the quality of work is being impacted by it and their own families are being impacted. So thank you for raising the issue. We've taken some steps in some good direction by putting in more resources, upping the call line, the suicide prevention call line, getting out a public, uh, awareness campaign. So people know it's out there, that there is a hotline that people can call at any point where someone can help you with your mental health issues, especially if you're facing self harm.
Thank you. During our Ways and Means hearings, there, there wasn't a hearing that we had talking about any discipline that didn't bring up the mental health issue. Whether it was in public safety, it was in education, it was in, you know, general way of life. Mental health was a focus on just about everything that we talked about this year. So I do believe that you will see some investment in mental health when the motion gets released in a couple of days. But to the Senator's point, um, this is an issue that is so massive that sits in its own category that the expectation will be that we'll take up something separate on mental health probably during this term. What that looks like will, remains to be seen, but there's a number of legislative initiatives and sometimes we do, as we've done previously, omnibus bills that deal with a lot of different things under that big discipline of mental health. So I expect that we'll be doing something sooner than later.
Thank you guys, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yep, real quick. I'd like to thank Mr. Oliver. The, the other day we seen you at the, the Police Department Awards there and I got to meet you, chewed your ear off. Todd, you're probably glad I wasn't chewing on your ear. Your ear. But, uh, uh, early you mentioned about funding and stuff. You know, it's kind of a request that, and I know I chewed your ear off about, um, the, years ago you guys created the runoff water things that we town has to do for runoff water. And just last week, excess runoff water comes down. Stormwater, okay, yeah. Stormwater, um, so a couple of weeks, our last meeting, we actually approved to use taxpayers' money to figure out how to properly tax the local residents on the stormwater runoff so we can do what the state has asked us. So this is a friendly request of maybe you ought to look into saying, hey, you know, you, you asked us to do something, but you're not helping us do it.
I can tell you.
Again, thanks for being.
No, no, drink, clean drinking water.
It's probably the nicest I've been, this, I've delivered, but yeah, it's, it's, I, you know, it really rubbed me to be spending taxpayers' money to figure out how to tax them.
Yeah, and you know.
It's, sorry, it just.
We, we all, we all want right now clean drinking water. I mean, that's becoming one of the biggest challenges that we're, we're looking at. And since the Clean Water Act was passed in 1971, for a lot of our water and sewer systems, there hasn't been a cent of federal dollars that have flowed into either the Commonwealth or municipalities. Many of the communities in my district are in Springfield Water and Sewer. Most of these pipes, most of the groundwater that's impacted by that hasn't been changed in, you know, 50, 60 years that are underground right now. We finally are seeing some, some level of investment with the deficit, uh, the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed at the federal level that is going to bring more dollars into the Commonwealth that hopefully can be used to broaden our definition of infrastructure away from just roads and bridges and into things like our groundwater and to our drinking water. Because one thing that we've noticed, when a community is impacted by drainage issues or water issues, look at Flint, Michigan or Jackson, Mississippi, it can cripple your economy right away. So making sure that we number one, recognize that communities are facing the brunt of these increases and the taxpayers within the community are pa- are paying to actually clean up and to provide the, uh, the storm drain, uh, drainage issues that are needed, that used to be provided by the federal government at, at a certain level that would trickle down to the state and then to the municipalities. We need to look at it and my, my hope is that when the Commonwealth begins to see some of these dollars from the infrastructure bill that was passed at the federal level, that water and sewer and cleanup is top on the list because it, you know, communities are facing the burden of it and the ratepayers that are within it are facing it as well.
If it gets us any extra points, I know we finished up early with the CSO project.
Correct. Well, it's, uh, you know, Palmer was proactive.
We were.
Vansu overflow, a lot of municipalities were not.
I can fish in the river now. There, it used to be green.
And brown.
Was doing the changeovers.
But thank you for mentioning that.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you both for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And like I said, feel free to reach out to us anytime that you need any help.
I miss this room.
I tell you, these are the comfiest chairs for guests that I've ever been in over here.
These, these were not the chairs when we were on the Board of Selectmen.
No, they were not. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they were wooden.
Good night, thanks.
Bye. They're probably still kicking.
Night, guys.
They are, they're between our offices right now.
No, they're in the planning office.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of Kathy.
Thank you.
Sergulee.
Thank you, Jeff.
Skarlia to the Palmer Cultural Council for a term to expire in 2026.
Can I make a motion?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, please note that Phil is no longer in the room.
Phil left.
Next item is, um, we have department head reports. The first is William Burna. Uh, the.
Chief?
Chief, uh, for an update on the emergency hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, you're technically here in your emergency management director role, correct?
Did we get a copy of that, by the way?
Yeah, it's attached to the email.
Yeah, because it's like 240 something pages long.
You wrote this yourself?
No, we.
Way to go, Wiz.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, it's too funny.
Floor is yours.
Okay, um, we had the, uh, Hazard Mitigation Plan, which, uh, expired in, uh, December of 2021. Uh, we received a grant, uh, from MEMA to, uh, rewrite the, or update the plan. We were, um, connected with a, uh, consulting company to, uh, help us with the, uh, rewriting of the, or the updating of the plan. Uh, it took maybe like six months before, um, we were connected with a, uh, they had a hard time finding a consulting company to do the work. So, um, once that happened, uh, we spent the rest of the time updating the plan and, uh, tonight you have the, uh, final step is, uh, you signing the, uh, plan and accepting it for the town. Um, it'll, the plan will last five years before it needs to be updated again.
Any questions?
Nope.
Oh, I see that Converse is the, the main focus on the front page. So what happens if, uh?
I submitted a bunch of photos of the town and they picked that for some reason.
Oh, yeah. So what happens, because I'm sure it's Conver- it's Converse of any, um, like focus in the plan as far as like a location for anything or was this just a picture? Okay, cool.
I think they took that off the web, maybe the website or something.
Okay, all right.
It does, it does identify Converse though somewhere in here as, um, is it intermediate or?
Like a heating?
A warm up.
Oh, distribution, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right.
And, uh.
Okay.
Currently need to, uh, start working on.
Like an alternative.
Alternative.
Yep.
Well, it looks like you did change though, sorry to interrupt you, the, uh, shelters, because it used to be our emergency shelter, correct?
Yeah, I believe it still is, um.
It looks like it shifted in this plan to just distribution and shelters and now the schools and a couple of churches.
Yeah, the, the schools and I think Pathfinder also was, uh, still shelters. I'm currently, uh, working with the town of Munson, um, to have an agreement to use, uh, their shelter. Um, it would be only with, um, if it was a town wide emergency, not a multi-town. You know, so if they had to use it, they would have first priority of it, but.
Okay. I thought it was interesting in here, I didn't read it word for, everything word for word, but that where it talked about like the different type of, um, situations and the small number of people that actually would.
Be affected by.
Be affected and would go to a shelter.
Right.
Yeah, I just thought that was interesting. Okay.
Yep.
Um. Any questions?
Oh, I make a motion. We accept the Hazard Mitigation Plan as provided.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Bob. Any discussion or further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill's hat hand.
Please also note that Phil is still not in the room.
Oh, it doesn't count.
I know.
All right, uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, did you need us to actually sign stuff tonight, though?
Um, if you couldn't.
Do you have what we need to sign?
There's like a first page. I'm looking at the document.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, if you could get it.
I'll, I'll print it out and get it signed.
Yeah, but we're going to need to do it today because he needs it before the end of the week and I will not be back here before that.
Same.
All right, I will go print it out.
You don't have to do it right now, just be, think at the end.
One thing I noticed.
Before we leave.
Okay.
That it's not filled out and it's not a huge deal, but the record of changes.
Yeah.
It's, it's blank?
Well, that's, that's because we haven't made any changes.
Oh, future changes.
Yeah, so that's.
This is brand new.
That's, that's for when Converse is. Yeah, but this is a new one. Yeah, you start from, you start over, yeah.
That's just like a log, so then we update the plan, we use that to update the plan.
Got it.
Yeah, so when Converse.
From here on out.
Gotcha.
No longer there's the distribution center.
Okay, and you'll try to take care of the things we talked about?
Thanks, chief.
Take care.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have our second department head report, which is Gabriella Potter.
Yeah, all right.
Town of Cowet.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi Gabriella.
Gabriella Potter. I took the town accountant's position, uh, back in October of 2021 after John retired. So it's been a year and a half now. Um, and, uh, now that I've had a chance to take the time and, and focus on the processes that take place during the normal accounting year, I've been dedicating some of my time on the projects that have been put on the back burner. One of them is the chart of accounts. Um, so together with the school's business manager, Sarah Minard, I've been working on that project. Um, completing this project will greatly improve the town's reporting abilities and the school's, uh, day to day operations. We try to meet every week, um, at least once to keep this project moving and to meet our goal of completing this, uh, by the end of this fiscal year. Um, it requires some coordination with, uh, the consultant and the software vendor. Um, so I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but fingers crossed. So once this project is completed, our goal is also to implement the Munis purchasing module, which will, uh, decentralize, uh, the AP process uh, by allowing some of the departments to enter their data, upload the backup documentation, um, into Munis. And once that done, um, they will send it over to the town manager's, um, office and the accounting office for review and approvals. This, um, this will further improve the efficiency of both offices, the accounting and the business, um, schools, um, the business office at the school. Other than that, I've been helping the town manager with the preparation of the fiscal 24 budget. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing some of you on Wednesday. Uh, I've also reviewed the capital projects accounts. Um, I've reached out to all of the department heads to inquire about the status of the capital projects. So, um, included in your packets, um, there is a list I've prepared of some of the, the projects that have been completed by, uh, but have some unspent balances. Um, the town manager and I are proposing to move the town, um, the total to the capital stabilization fund, um, to have it available for any upcoming future projects.
I'm, I have a question, Gabriella, I guess two. One is, um, so as far as the chart of accounts, what's your date that like everything needs to be done for it to be realistic that you'd be able to?
Ideally, we would like to start it with the beginning of fiscal year. So that's, like I said, we're, we're trying to get that done as, as soon as possible.
Right, but knowing that's less than three months away, I mean, at what point, like what point do you have to make that decision as to whether it's going to happen again? Because I'm assuming, I mean, you don't want to start posting anything for July 1st until that's up and running.
Right.
So, I mean, are you close at this point or?
I mean, uh, we've, we've picked it up, uh, sort of in the middle of it because I'm sure you know that John and, um, and the consultant, they, they started working on that y- years ago. And, um, so while reviewing this, we decided that we just, uh, actually need to make some changes. So we're, we're working on putting together the format. Once the format is finalized, it sho- it shouldn't take us that long. Like I said, the only, um, challenge right now is, um, coordinating that with, with Munis to have that switched over to the new system. So I, I don't have a timeline yet, but as soon as I do, I will let you know.
And if, if you don't hit for fiscal 24, are you going to postpone till fiscal 25 or would you try to do it partway through?
I think we're still going to try to do that mid-year.
You are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to wait a, a full another year, yeah.
Plus it's a big desire of the school as well.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Okay, um, and then on the, um, the list of capital projects that you gave us to close out, I was just wondering, um, like as far as funding sources, were any of these borrowings?
No, none of them.
So they were all like free, free cash or stabilization transfers?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they have to go back to where they came from if it wasn't free cash?
No, it's just if there was, if it was a borrowing, there's different rules for a borrowing. So I just wanted to make sure. All right, um. Any questions for Gabriella before we, I move on to the resolution?
Okay, great. All right, so we have resolution 202323, which is to approve a transfer of unspent remaining balances from various completed capital projects to the capital stabilization fund for appropriation for future capital projects. The amount of all the closed accounts is 140,000, $573.53. End of a motion.
I motion, second.
Second by Phil. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have, um, two policies before us. The first is a tax enforcement policy.
Yes, um, right. So we are going to start going through the list of the financial policies uh, and bringing different ones to the council. Uh, these are obviously, um, ones that we kind of do many of, most of this stuff already. Um, this will just make it more formalized. Uh, the tax enforcement, I think, is pretty standardized across the Commonwealth. Couple of things that I would like to change as this is written here. So where it says, uh,
So where it says, um, let me see, where does it say the thing here? So, down under Tax Taking, Part B, Tax Taking, it says, if this does not result in the full remittance by September first, we actually do that earlier, so we could make that June first. And then the other part that I wanted to change is under the Tax Title Payment Agreements. That's in E. It says that for taxpayers that, it's actually on page forty, it's at the top of page forty. For the taxpayers that fully comply with their payment agreements, the treasurer will waive fifty percent of the interest that accrues. We don't waive any interest. So there will, we don't want to waive anything. They have to pay the full freight. That's the only changes that I had on that policy that I would like to incorporate.
So you'll just eliminate that entire statement?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is that, is that gonna be taken case-by-case basis or just at all period, we're not doing that?
I would leave it up to the treasurer to be able to have that discretion, but I would say for the most part, the answer would be no.
Sounds dangerous, though. Discretion, like.
Well, the treasurer does have discretion.
I think discretion part is dangerous.
I was already shaking her heads up.
Up to fifteen dollars?
We'll just make it a blanket policy, no waiving of any interest.
I'm just asking.
Just out of curiosity, do they do that in other communities?
So, I don't, I can't speak to whatever all communities do, but in order to do it, we would have to actually accept a section of Mass General Law, which is referenced here, sixty sixty-two A. So you can't, you can't just do it without, it's a local option.
Okay, so if we don't approve the local option, then we don't have to do it.
You can't do it.
You can't, can't do it. Okay, so then, yeah.
So.
Have we in the past, sorry, Phil, have we already approved that in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we have not.
I just want to make sure we're not backpedaling if we already let the horses out, you know what I mean? If people are already getting that.
They shouldn't be.
So, right.
Well, I would like to say if they ain't, and they, they fully complied and met it, I think it would be a good thing to give them that fifty percent of the interest. Yeah, why not? I mean, wha, whatever reason they were struggling or whatever and couldn't pay, and they came to an agreement and they met their agreement, there should be a reward. Quite frankly, and, and if we have to go do what you're saying with the state or whatever, then so be it. That, you know, why just keep kicking them in the face?
This, this other provision has to be accepted.
You don't know what they've gone through in their lives and stuff. I think you come to an agreement and you say, yeah, Dad, I'm gonna do this, and you do it. Usually, when I was, you, you got a reward. So, quite frankly, I think, and obviously it makes it a little easier for them to maybe get caught up, but that's just my logic, they, I don't know. I mean, think of it maybe this way, as it was somebody in your own family that was struggling and went through that and they agreed and they met, met it. I, quite frankly, don't see why anyone would not say, sure.
I personally would just like.
It didn't cost the town nothing.
Right, I personally would like to confirm that we are not making deals like that currently.
I can confirm that, we don't make deals like that currently.
At all, we don't make, we don't cut interest.
No.
All right, so then.
I said it was discretion, are you just, there was a?
No, he asked if it was.
I asked if it was discretion.
Not you.
Oh, oh.
Right, and you said there was a dollar limit that they have a discretion?
I think it's like fifteen dollars.
Oh, that's to, that you can waive interest and penalties up to fifteen dollars. That has nothing to do with this.
That's an internal policy?
That's state law.
Oh.
But I think there, what's the demand fee here?
At the top of my head, I don't know.
Fifteen dollars?
It's very minimal.
Is that, I, I would suggest that, as you said, you need to go to the state to be able to do it.
It's, we would have to vote it, it's a local option, so we would have to.
But you said you still have to adopt a, a state.
A state statute, but it would be the council.
I will be bringing this state statute at the May meeting.
I would just encourage the town council to say, hey, look, we love everybody in town and if we can cut you a break and you lived up to your word, you deserve it. That's how that was raised.
The only other part of that, then, would be how much of a financial impact would the town take if we did that?
Nothing, because you ain't gotten nothing to begin with and now you're getting what you were promised already. You just keep adding more percentage onto what is owed behind. So you had to wait longer to get what you got, but it didn't, to me, impact you in no way, you know.
Well, the way I look at it is it's like a loan. You take a loan out, it's got interest, and you didn't pay it back in time, then.
So let's go to twenty-five percent, what can we come up with here?
I don't, I don't know.
Deal for the taxpayers, that they should get a break.
So I think the difference.
If they live up to their word.
There's, there's a difference between what you're saying where someone is actually has a financial issue that makes it so that they can't pay their taxes. And then there's, and then there's a situation where someone just doesn't pay their taxes and floats it as long as they can until they, and so then.
And quite frankly, they're probably not gonna live up to their word.
Um, they might.
I doubt it, because if, if they're being, they're just playing, maybe, but.
It, it doesn't, some people just play, they, they wait until it's going to go into foreclosure
Right.
to pay the taxes, and that's just reality, but.
I, then there should be something, because I, I don't feel because of that one person that people that are truly struggling for whatever reason, you shouldn't get that.
Yeah, but what if it's spread like cancer and a lot of people did it? That would be a hardship on us. But I'm all for helping.
So, yeah, so I just had a couple, I, I, I'm not ready to, to support this at this point because I think there's a few things that I just wanted to get information on.
Okay.
And I did not have time to do that, but.
It's a tough call.
So, I, I don't, I don't like the wording, and so there's a lot of legislation pending right now that has to do with tax enforcement. And I think this is actually the, the worst time to actually adopt this type of policy. The wording in it, but I, I, and again, I, I would like Carolyn's in, input into this, and I, I didn't have the, the time to call her, but under demands, final taxes are due to be paid as of May first. Fifteen days later, the collector will issue demands. That's really aggressive, and I don't know if, if, if we meet that.
So we do that, so we send out two letters.
No, demands is a.